I have a que-
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry, I have a question. Um, we talked about, I guess, the so-called grandfather clause. Um, in a sense, you know, existing business would not be required to comply if this passes. And what, does that go for the structure? Or let's say a business changes hand ownership?
Um, are we talking about the dumpster?
Um, anything pertaining to, uh, so like lights, dumpster? All tied back to what Commissioner Davis started with questioning.
So, yeah, if, if an, uh, so if an existing business has a dumpster, no, they don't have to comply. If they're gonna get, get a new dumpster, if, um, for example, Vigilant Host Company wants to get two dumpsters, they are gonna have to comply with these regulations. Um, does that answer your question?
Um, somewhat, yes, that and then if it was like a business that, uh, changed ownership, let's say.
Yeah, so if they're required to do the site plan from the Planning Commission, and they're gonna do significant development, so if, there were, there's really only one empty lot in the village zone, so, yes, they would have to comply if they're, um, going to the Planning Commission with a site plan.
Understood, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, um, seventeen sixteen twenty, meeting of the board, this is for the Planning Commission only. Um, first, I removed the requirement that the Planning Commission must meet every quarter. Um, because it really does not make sense to waste town resources to meet if there's nothing on the agenda. Um, currently, we do not meet. Technically, we are required to meet, but there's really no point in meeting if there's nothing on the agenda just to, uh, open up the meeting and adjourn. Um, so I changed it to read, "Scheduled, the Planning Commission shall hold meetings in January, and as the Planning Commission duties require. Um, if there is business before the Planning Commission, meetings shall be held monthly until the business has been completed." Also, with discussions of, uh, Chair Sardik, we changed the order of business for each of the meeting. Um, the order of business shall be as follows. Call of order, opening, review and approval of minutes, public comment, review and consideration of agenda items, old business, new business, other business, and then adjournment. Um, next slide?
Just one question there. Do they pledge allegiance to the flag?
We do.
Okay, maybe you ought to put that in there. Did I miss that?
We don't have it in the agenda, or, but I can put it in there.
Uh, it's up to the board if they have any problems with that. Okay, whatever, I'd like to see it in there.
Okay, that's, no problem at all.
Yep.
Everybody else okay?
Good. Alright.
Wait one second. Okay, we'll do that right after call to Weber. Okay, uh, next slide. Seventeen twenty ten, intent. These are simple error corrections, um, to the name of the zoning districts. So neighborhood, commercial, general, commercial. Next slide. Um, uses permitted in the neighborhood commercial district, error corrections, uh, B1 zoning district name change, and then, uh, business and advertising signs. We deleted everything after that and made it in accordance with chapter seventeen thirty-eight. We missed that when we did the sign amendment update. Uh, next slide. Seventeen twenty thirty, uses permitted in the general commercial district, uh, error corrections, B2 zoning district name change, again with the signs, uh, in accordance with chapter seventeen thirty-eight. Next slide. Required area, or lot area, lot width in yards and commercial districts. Um, name changes, again. Next slide. Commercial district buffer. Um, so, when, when the insurance brokers of Maryland came about and when we had the amendment, um, we felt that the board did not like the fence requirement. Um, and so that's basically why we added the whole, um, buffer yard for the trees, plantings, bushes, so we got rid of the fence, and now we're going more towards a natural, uh, vegetative barrier, which I think is more attractive and it's better for the environment as well. Um, next slide. Seventeen twenty-four twenty, uses permitted in the industrial park district, error corrections on the industrial park zoning district name, and light industrial park district to industrial park district. Next slide. Uh, uses permitted, this is again, we just changed the name per the comp plan, and the acronym should be placed after the spelled out word, words. Next slide. Same exact thing for the institutional district. Next slide. Accessory uses, grammar corrections, acronym should be placed after the spelled out words, uh, sign, chapter correction for the, uh, signs. There we go. Um, so signs should be in accordance with chapter seventeen thirty-eight. Um, seventeen thirty-two thirty, uses permitted in the R1 district, sign code section correction again. Business and advertising signs shall be in accordance with chapter seventeen thirty-eight. Next slide. Off-street parking and loading, the village zone portion of the code has its own unique code requirements, so I added the light requirements for this new development, which we're not gonna see a lot of new development, there's hardly any open areas available in the village zone. Next. Signs seventeen thirty-six eighty, again, uh, shine shall be permitted in accordance with town code, chapter seventeen thirty-eight. Next slide. Uh, s- chapter seventeen thirty-eight, sign code, uh, section seventeen thirty-eight ninety, regulations by sign type limited duration signs. Um, based on recent court cases and at the recommendation of the town attorney, we have removed the regulation stating that only one small limited duration sign is permitted per property. Um, this is what the attorney's, um, rationale was. The Fourth Circuit has previously struck down sign ordinances regarding the number of signs placed on residential properties. You can regulate size, setbacks, et cetera, but not numbers. The Fourth Circuit was particularly concerned with political expression. While your sign ordinance does exempt personal expression signs from being included in the calculation of type, area, or number of permanent signs allowed, that exception does not appear to apply to limited duration temporary signs, so, non-permanent. Next slide. The same exact thing, but for temporary signs. So, um, they are permitted to have an unlimited amount of small temporary signs per the court case. Next slide. Lot of record seventeen forty-ten, I create, uh, made a correction. Uh, the Board of Appeals chapter is seventeen twelve, not seventeen forty-four. Next slide. Allowable projections of structures into yards and other exceptions into the yard requirements. Um, so currently, the code only allows, uh, residents to extend a deck only ten feet into their rear yard, as we all can imagine, that's a pretty small deck. Um, we are recommending that this be increased to sixteen feet. Um, this is the average size of a deck. That's due to popular demand. Next slide. Allowable projections of business structures in the yards. Um, this is another change that we missed during the sign code, uh, amendment. Uh, we removed marquees because marquees are prohibited in new sign code. Next slide. Uh, site plan required, so, um, error correction removed rural reserve district and HS district, we no longer have those zoning districts. And also, I added the site plan requirements for the following uses in the village zone. Uh, multifamily dwellings with five or more units, newly constructed non-residential structures, and uses permitted by special exception, so any of those would be required to submit a site plan to the Planning Commission. Um, they're, you know, larger uses, uh, high, more intensive uses, so I believe that the Planning Commission should be able to review this to make sure everything's kosher with neighboring property owners. Um, next slide. And last slide. Uh, seventeen forty-eight fifty, site plan requirements. I added the lighting plan under the list of requirements to be submitted with the site plan. Uh, this will help the Planning Commission and town staff ensure that new use and or non-residential structures do not create light pollution on neighboring properties. And C, site plan fees are to be established from time by time by policy resolution ordinance. And that's everything, are there any questions on the zoning amendment or anything you want me to bring up to the Planning Commission?
I have, I have two.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Zach, thank you, it's a great job. I, I, you know, we went over this a couple of times, but a question keeps popping up, maybe it's, uh, on, um, seventeen oh eight one six oh, I don't know if we can bring that up, can you bring that up, Matty?
What page is that, Mr. Mayor?
It's, um,
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, the, uh, clear sight distance triangle?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, again, thank you, I, I know I've driven you crazy on this thing, but it, what, um, if we can get there, seventeen oh eight sixteen. Hold on, well, getting there. Okay, perfect, thank you, uh, Michelle. Define what road, is, that's just not a normal subdivision road, is it? Or is that a, uh, collector road, or what, or what kind of roads are these?
It's gonna be on any road, it's gonna be on driveways as well. Um, so, for example, Emmett Ridge Two comes in, um, they're gonna have to show a clear sight triangle in every single driveway on the, um, site plan. And so we will ensure that there's no trees planted in that site area. Or, or fences.
That means there probably won't be a corner lot house.
No, there will be, they're just not allowed to have anything in the, um, clear sight triangle, so basically, it's like, think of it as an easement, you know, you can't place things in easements, you can't place things in the clear sight triangle.
Okay. Alright, uh, just that, um, can this ever go to the Board of Appeal, I, I don't have, there's nothing in question, just could this go to the Board of Appeals, or is this solid? You can't do this?
It could go to the Board of Appeals technically, however, you have to show a, a unique hardship.
I like the idea, I really like the idea. Uh, I, I just, that's the clarity I need, and the last, last thing was the, um, we, we're getting away of, uh, what did you call it, uh, rural reserve?
Yes.
What, what do we call the, um, about the hundred, hundred acre, a hundred and fifty acres, uh, on Harmony Road? Uh, um, that was put into something called a rural reserve, what, what are we calling that property now?
Yeah, it's basically, it's exactly what you're thinking, but now the comprehensive plan calls it conservation recreation. So, um, that is what our current zoning map also has. So it's the same exact thing you're thinking of.
Okay, there were certain, certain things that came along with that. At, at that time, I was, uh, fighting to keep the zoning. Uh, but, uh, we have somebody who bought that property, and I, I have no ties with that person at all, but there were certain things that were said there that if the demand came about, that that would revert back into, uh, um, well, they got rid of O R I, but does that still? Cause that, that gentleman who bought that property and is, uh, developing rudders and has dreams of developing something else, I just wonder if, um, that he should still have that opportunity that that could go back into. Uh, we have to do some paper trail on this, but, um,
You're correct, Mr. Mayor, the, if I'm not mistaken, the zoning ordinance, um, for conservation recreation, if you look at the zoning orders, I don't have it in front of me, but it states in the intent of that district not to be a permanent, uh, use. So, um, if someone would bring it back and do a text amendment, um, you know, they would use that definition, um, and I think the board would be obligated to, um, meet that demand.
Okay. Alright, that, that may be something for that gentleman to, to make sure he gets a full understanding of that. But thank you, it's a terrific, terrific, um, job you and Mrs. Shaw did. I know she worked on this and, and our town manager put into this in a lot of time. Thank you.
Mr. Golden?
Yes.
Um, I'm looking at page fifty, fifty of sixty-six, and we're, we're modifying some language there for, um, districts, establishment of districts, it's seventeen oh eight point zero one zero. Um, and we're changing light industrial to industrial park. Um, does that change any uses? Because, you know, you're saying, no, I can't, sorry.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you, no, sir, um, it's, all the uses are staying the same, we haven't changed one use in this whole.
Okay, um, just the, the concern was, and, and this goes pretty far back on the, the comprehensive plan and, and planning and zoning when it existed as such. Um, I think the issue was referring to it for light industrial. It did have zoning different than industrial in the parlance of planning. And I think it had to do with protecting neighbors from, gosh, this was a while ago. Um, it was like odors, noise, um, mining, refining, um, and, and, and things of that nature that would be, uh, disruptive, perhaps, like to, to those in proximity to it, those neighboring it. So, is that, is that still accurate that those uses would not be allowed? I mean, I think it was warehouses were good, some light factory, like assembly was good. Um, and distribution centers, like warehouses and distribution centers, I think that's the new one.
Yeah, you actually have a very good memory, because this is something I was just reviewing. Um, as the board knows, and I'm not sure if it's been, it is public information now. Um, we received a sketch plan for a warehouse slash manufacturer of light nature. Um, however, what you, what you bring up is a good point. Um, in the code, under industrial park, you have to, they have to submit to the Planning Commission a certificate from a certified engineer stating that they, this particular business would not protrude any noise, light, smell, et cetera, and that has to be approved by the Planning Commission, or they cannot operate. So, you know, you're, you're never gonna see, uh, you know, a manure factory or anything there, cause it's not per- permitted.
I, I think, more along the lines of a tannery, but, uh, okay, cause that, that was, uh, that, that was sort of a, a big clarifier, because the question was, would we lose jobs in the community if we had limitations on our industrial use? And, and that was quite, quite the bone of, uh, discontent at the time. So, um, I appreciate it, thank you.
Yep, that stays in the code. Any other questions or comments? If I hear none, um, if we could do the same thing and forward this to the Planning Commission for review and comment, and then also set the public hearing for the same date.
I need a motion to accept the ordinance twenty dash twenty oh nine, uh, and set the date for October fifth as the planning, uh, as the public hearing.
I make a motion to forward ordinance, uh, twenty twenty dash zero nine, the zoning amendment to the Planning Commission, uh, for review and comment, and to set the public hearing date for October fifth, twenty twenty.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, is it second?
I second it.
Second, Commissioner Burns. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? Motion carries, five to zero. Number six on the agenda is approval contract with Fox Associates.
Okay, uh, Matty, if you could pop the slideshow, please, this is very brief.
What's another?
Okay. Next slide, please. Alright, so, um, the town was awarded a seventeen thousand five hundred thirty-eight dollar Chesapeake Bay Trust Green Street, Green Jobs and Green Towns Grant in order to create a Green Street conceptual plan, uh, which will be designed in order to implement green infrastructure enhancements along North Seaton Avenue, um, from North Avenue to Provincial Parkway, which you can see on the screen. Um, this is approximately sixteen hundred linear feet. Um, as you heard, uh, a little while ago regarding the grants and loans, um, the town will be replacing approximately fifty-year-old water lines within the next, uh, however many years or decade, which was located underneath impervious asphalt swales on North Seaton Avenue. So instead of repaving the swales with asphalt after the water line replacement project, um, I'm looking to incorporate low-maintenance green infrastructure practices. Uh, next slide, please. So, currently, stormwater sheet flows, uh, down North Seaton Avenue's asphalt swales directly into Flat Run, which causes streambank erosion and frequent flooding that entraps the residents of the North Gate Residential Development. Um, the asphalt swales are also extremely unattractive, in my opinion. Um, next slide, please. So here's some more pictures of the asphalt swales. Um, this project will create a conceptual plan in order to greatly reduce the amount of stormwater runoff and pollution that is piped and discharged directly into local streams, uh, protect and restore the health of local streams in the Chesapeake Bay, enhance the quality of life, increase town beautification and community livability, and incorporate flood hazard mitigation. Next slide. Uh, we, we can also use this project as future MS four credits, uh, for our federally and state mandated stormwater management permit. Um, also, we will be working with MDOT and S H A, and they will also look to incorporate some storm drain inlets here. So it will, the stormwater will really flow nice. Um, next slide. And then next slide. Okay, so, um, please see the North Seaton Avenue examples on the screen, uh, of low-maintenance green infrastructure practices such as street trees, uh, native plantings, rain gardens, bio-retention cells and/or bioswales that may be incorporated into the plan. It will be designed in order to, um, in, in order to treat at least one inch of stormwater runoff. In twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-two, we intend to apply for grant funds in order to hire an engineering firm in order to create the Green Street engineered design of the conceptual plan. In twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four, we intend to imply for grant funds for the Green Street implementation or construction of the North Seaton Avenue Green Street, or, uh, it will be coordinated with the water line replacement. So if we plan on replacing it next year, for example, I would apply for it this year. Um, next slide. Here's another example. Once the contractor provides the first draft of the concept plan, we intend to hold a public meeting in order to gather public input on the proposed Green Street design, and we will definitely make necessary changes, um, based on public feedback. So, um, as you can see from the timeline, we bid the project out. Um, we were awarded the grant, and, uh, staff meeting dates, and staff recommends, based on comparable bid packets, staff recommends going with Fox and Associates for, for nineteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars for the following reasons. Um, they have extensive experience with the town, they've been working with the town for over twenty to thirty years. Um, they have a proven track record with the, to provide high-quality work, and they're ve- very knowledgeable with the town's water, sewer, and storm water infrastructure. Um, so the total cost of the town will be two thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars, which will be taken out of the Stormwater Management Fund. And that's everything I have, unless there's questions.
I have a question. The, um, it's related to the grant itself and the staff recommendation of, um, contractor. If we were to go with a contractor that came with a bid lower than the grant amount, would we still be able to use that grant? And if so, what would we do with, what, what would the difference be applied to?
So I would have to request a, um, a change order to our grant, so it would have to be approved by Chesapeake Bay Trust, uh, can't guarantee that they would approve it, um, but we would have to return everything with the exception of the lower bid.
So like, for example, if we, as a board collectively said, you know what, let's go with Zest LLC, because that's coming in at sixteen, about sixteen nine nine seven. That's less than the grant amount, so, um, you would have to contact the Chesapeake Bay Trust.
Yes, and I-
And they could then, they could then either reissue a grant for the amount that Zest is proposing, or just, uh, remove the grant entirely, and then we would be responsible for the full amount for Zest.
That's correct.
If I may add, Commissioner, the staff would not recommend Zest LLC. We utilized them for the dam analysis, and the project itself was over a year behind schedule. And we did have a lot of problems.
Thank you for that, I'm looking at the notes here, I just, the notes column looks, looks pretty good.
Right.
I for, I forgot about that, and then while I'm at it, while, what about the lowest amount? Barton and, I do not know how to pronounce that L name.
So the reason-
They're very detailed, and they have previous MS four experience, however-
Right, but they don't have any experience with the town's infrastructure, with the water and sewer lines that will have to be taken into consideration, so that's why we went with Fox.
Yeah, that, that concerned us, because, um, you know, Fox knows exactly where the water lines are, and they have so much experience. We were worried that there would be change order after change order, so, you know, that price could increase dramatically.
Uh, the, the, Mr. Ritzmay, or are you, are you done, sir, I'm sorry?
Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, sequencing the events, I know that we are compelled to change the water line, and are we also changing the wastewater line, just to clarify?
No.
No, okay, so the water service line we, we have to replace. Um, wha- what is our sequence of events? Will we be doing that first, do we have that funded? Or are we looking to do this prior to that, which seems somewhat illogical? Um, what's our chain of events, our timeline, please?
So, uh, I'll be applying for, well, since we already have the concept plan, we're gonna, we're gonna do that if approved tonight, and we'll get the engineered grant. I spoke with the Chesapeake Bay Trust, and since they already have funded us the concept plan, we're more than likely going to get the engineered plan on top of that. After that, I mean, really, it's at the discretion of the board, you know, when the, when we have the funding, first off. And, um, so I'll wait to apply for the implementation grant, construction grant, until whenever we're ready to do everything at the same time, so the water line will be replaced, and then we'll do this right afterwards. Um, there's also a sharing of costs, so it's gonna be cheaper to replace the water lines if we do this work, um, the contractors can share equipment, and, you know, the, the, it's already gonna be dug up, so it's gonna be cheaper on that end, so we're definitely gonna do them simultaneously.
So, the other question is, to, to clarify, North Seaton Avenue, South Seaton Avenue are not state, state roads, is that correct?
They are state roads.
They are state roads, so, isn't that another kinda set of hurdles we have to go through for approval related to this? If, uh, the blacktop needs to be pulled up for the water line work i- 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 as a contingency?
Correct, and-
We know that it's under this swale, um, retention area.
Yep, and we actually put that in the R F P. Um, Fox is aware that this is an S H A road, and they're very experienced with working with S H A. So they will be making sure the concept plan, we have it specified, that the concept plan must meet S H A, uh, requirements, or we won't accept it.
Okay, will the engineering design include specs or information related to replacing the water line?
It will have the location, however, it will not, we're- However, it will not, we're not permitted to, um, include the engineering of the water lines in the green street, uh, engineered designs.
Okay, and is there a sunset on the grant funding? So we might be compelled to do what we don't wanna do first and not do what we wanna do first, second?
No, no, not at all.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
No, I, I mean, I'm not gonna apply for the grant until we are a hundred percent sure and we have the funding, uh, for the water lines. It wouldn't make, it wouldn't make sense for us to apply, and then, you know, we don't have the funds. So we would get, you know, we would have to give the money back, which is, looks really bad.
And is, is, I guess, last item, is there a ballpark figure for the cost related to replacing that water line on North Seaton?
It's about, um, one point seven million dollars. If, if, um, off the top of my head, I don't have the number in front of me. Unfortunately, M D E did not give us any funding for the water lines, so we have to seek funding elsewhere. And we're just beginning the, beginning stages of that with USDA. There has to be a water and sewer, uh, rate analysis done before we can move forward. So that's where we are with the water lines.
Great, okay, thank you. That's appreciated. I ju- I just don't wanna consider one without the other.
Hey, Zach.
Yep.
On the, can you, can you use the triangle buffer? When you tear up the streets and put the greenage on both sides, the, 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 the frame back, can you go back one frame? See the car, right, the truck at the end? That's where Saint Joseph Lane comes out. And right now you cannot see the traffic coming down the hill at all with the traffic parked there.
Correct, so if, uh, the board approves the clear sight triangle, um, that parking space will be removed. Is that what your question is?
Yes, I ju- I just didn't wanna have, cause it, not only since I live on the end too, but the, the, uh, other older development people coming out that and won't be able to see either where the traffic parked there.
Yep, that's a perfect example of the clear sight triangle.
That's not really, I'm sorry to jump in here. That's not really a parking spot, though. It's just the shoulder of the road on a, on a state route that people use for parking.
Sure, sure.
Is that a red Ford pickup truck? I can't tell.
It was black. But I was just wondering that with the, with the new construction and stuff, if the triangle buffer would come into effect.
Sure.
On, on, on all the intersections going down through there, where the roads come out.
Yeah, that would definitely be, uh, put into the concept plan and engineering plans. This is just for the concept only. Right now, we're looking for, uh, feedback from the, the residents of the town. And like I said, we're gonna have a, once it's designed, we're gonna have a public meeting, most likely on Zoom if the COVID mess is still going on, and, uh, take as much feedback as possible.
Any other questions for Zach?
Yeah, this is just a little off base from where we are, but, uh, it just reminded me on the day of the bridge dedication, Senator Huff, uh, reminded me again to, to ask, uh, staff to get into him our funding requirements for our water lines and things like that, so he can get us on the top of his list. Uh, he, he felt bad about letting us out, but, uh, you know, maybe this has something to do with, with that can help us out to get that work done. So he did, uh, he did remember that, and, and I asked that we, uh, we get him something in writing.
Okay. Great.
Any other questions at this time? So we need a motion to accept Fox Associates for the amount of nineteen thousand eight hundred twenty-five dollars.
I make a motion to accept Fox and Associates for nineteen thousand eight twenty-five.
Motion's been made.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Commissioner Burns. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, setting the agenda for the next town meeting for September the eighth.
Okay.
Catherine?
Yes, I have, um, four items. I have one administrative business item. It will be proclamation declaring September twenty-six, twenty twenty as Arbor Day for consideration. And then agenda items, number one would be approval of resolution twenty dash ten R. Approving the town of Emmitsburg's participation in the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development's Main Street Affiliate Program for consideration. Number two would be an initial presentation of the compensation study analysis. And then number three, introduction of the wastewater treatment plant annexation resolution, adoption of the annexation plan, and schedule a public hearing for November second, twenty twenty at seven thirty P M for consideration.
For the sewer?
For the wastewater treatment plant.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
That's good. We, I concur.
Anybody else have anything they wanna put on the agenda? We have three items on the agenda, one administrative.
They're gonna be long.
No, it means we should be done by eight fifteen.
Are they gonna be long ones? Alrighty, hearing none. Item number one would be the resolution twenty dash ten R. Number two will be, uh, the compensation for the annexation, right? No.
Um.
Have compensation.
Number two is the initial presentation of the compensation study analysis.
Study analysis for the compensation. Any other ones annexation?
Right.
For the wastewater treatment plant.
Yes.
Is number three.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, administrative business will be the proclamation for the Arbor Day.
Yes. And just a reminder, that is a Tuesday meeting.
That's a Tuesday meeting?
Mm-hmm.
All for Labor Day.
Right.
We have a consensus on the agenda as, as presented? Everybody okay with it? Alrighty, I need a motion to adjourn the town meeting. Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Sure.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Ritz.
Ritz.
All in favor, please say aye. I can't hear you. I just, I mean, can't see you. I just.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Thank you for participating in the meeting. It is nine thirty-eight. We adjourned the town meeting for August the third. Thank you, guys.
Night.
Frank, are you still there?
Thank you, have a good night.
Yeah, we.
I want him to call on what he is.
You're up here.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, is the Little League, is, are they, they coming in September?
I haven't heard anything official yet. Um.
Okay, I seen them playing in here over the weekend. It was full in the back.
Believe it or not, what that was, was a tournament that was supposed to be held in five or six different towns, and every place got rained by Emmitsburg. They brought the rest of the tournament to Emmitsburg. They used fields that they weren't even really scheduled to use. Can you believe that?
Wow.
But everything else got rained out.
Alrighty, just let me know if, if they're gonna open up, cause the concession stand and stuff, I have to work on.
Yep, I sure will.
Alrighty. Thank you.